Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Reverend Butler. I just have a few housekeeping announcements to go over. It feels like January's been like 700 days, so. So our January 19th Policy Review Meeting was canceled due to the weather last week. So that meeting's been rescheduled to Thursday, February 1st at 10:30 a.m. in this, oh, 11:30, sorry, 11:30 in the Summer Place Community Room. Also, I've confirmed the date of Friday, February 16th for a luncheon with our state legislators. It will be held at Bridgewater Place at noon, so Board members, please just make efforts to attend that luncheon. And with that, are there any changes to this agenda? Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Christie, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Dr. Ryswick, I'll hand it to you for Superintendent's Report. I'm sure you have lots of, lots of things to report on.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. No, I do appreciate it and I do, I really try not to make these longer, but the things keep popping up. So we'll, we'll do that. So thank you very much, Ms. Henderson, members of the board. So I want to start actually, obviously changing from the events of what took place today and kind of give an update again to the board. I know I was able to text and either myself or members of our staff to kind of keep you abreast of where, of where things were today. I'll start from again in my comments. I'll be honest, it's just as a person, it was scary today, you know? And, and I think we've all had that moment to be a little emotional about, you know, things and was fortunate to be able to speak to the staff at Hall's Middle with Ms. Strickland today and, you know, to look those folks in the eye and know everything we thought was real today. And they thought it was real too. And they handled it like it was real. And, and they did a great job. You know, they're heroes. And to the Hall's community and to those, to those children, thank God it wasn't real today, but none of us knew that initially. And so I just appreciate again what our teachers did today, Ms. Strickland's leadership, she was phenomenal through the whole thing. Even the support from the Hall's team, Mr. Long was down. I started my morning with Mr. Lynn at Hall's Elementary this morning and just their willingness to kind of pull together to quickly allow us to be able to move was great. So with that, I will share the facts too, but I wanted to say that on the front side of things that we appreciate that. So for those who don't know, I know the board does, but for the public who doesn't know that earlier today, we were, there was a call placed with the 911 regarding a potential threat to Hall's Middle School. All of our students are safe, all of our staff are safe as well. Our security, law enforcement partners and our security team cleared the building. I'm, I'm happy to report this. This is, it was, it was really great to see Chief and his team. I've talked with Tom Spangler today, he's out of town, but I had some conversations with him about things as well. You know, all the work we put in, all the talk we do about safety, and that's come up time and time again this week. We started the school year talking about safety. You know, those, those press conferences we hold are not for show. Those press conferences are to talk about what we do and what we think our number one thing is, and that is to keep kids safe and to keep our staff safe. You know, the fact that we have the relationships where I can talk to Tom, I could talk to Chief Perry Yard, we have that, excuse me, Chief Noel, Chief Perry Yard has those same relationships with the FBI, with, with Homeland Security, with Secret Service, all those. Like, like I've met with those guys too with him. We know that. Our, our security team today, and I know some of those folks are, are in the room, responded today the way they should and the ways they died, I wouldn't want them to respond, not just as a superintendent. When we got there, they were fully in charge. They had our, our officers were on the ground, the security, the sheriff's team were on the ground, they're doing exactly what they should do. Families were, were safe and being informed. Happy to report, 46 minutes from the time the call came in to all clear at the building. That doesn't happen without coordination, and that didn't happen without planning on the front side and all the drills that we go through and the practices. Chief pointed out, it's very true, we did two of these, two of these simulations, and it was hard going through those simulations. I won't name the schools. The FBI came and did them, and they picked schools and took pictures of our hallways this summer, and we walked through it with everybody, including Charm Allen was there. What would happen now if the, you know, like we did all of those kinds of things, and we do all of that for events like today. And again, our, Ms. Strickland talking about, we practiced these drills, they did, and their people followed those today. And every kid, they talked about, you know, pulling kids out of hallways and getting them in, getting them from the cafeteria to places where they were within a dawd and protected, and it happened like that, and they did it. So they did a great job with that and, and, you know, made us feel good. You never feel good in days like this, but you feel good to know that the preparation has been put in place and that we would have, had it been real, hopefully been able to avoid a whole lot of things today that could have happened. Again, can't say enough about Ms. Strickland and her team and what they did, the teachers in the building, our law enforcement partners and everything that they did as well. And, you know, I, I think hopefully it was, it was kind of nice to, as we talked to the staff, thank them for what they had done. And obviously, we let them and the kids go. Parents need to hug their children today, and they didn't need to wait till 3:30 to do that. And so we appreciated, you know, Ms. Strickland's thought on that and allowed that to happen as well. But just appreciative of the community, talking to some of our officers on the, on the end, you know, they said, oh, we sent extra support for checkout, all those kinds of things. But Ryan did a great job with getting buses there so we could move kids as fast as we could. But they were saying the families leaving the Hall's community as they were leaving the door that they were getting 10 times thank yous to any complaints. And I think that speaks a lot to the work that our people did today. So hopefully, we don't have to experience that again. But I also hope that it does help parents understand that we take it serious and that, and that we're ready. And, and, you know, some of the folks are in the back of the room who do this too. And, and thank you for what you guys do. Again, some of you were there today, and, and our response was great. Appreciate Chief and his leadership and just all the program that we have. And I'll say this, Chief even said this in our press conference today, and he's right. Thank you all. You all have chosen to invest in the security team, and today when we thought we needed it, it showed up. And, and, you know, Chief said, we weren't built like this two years ago. That's investments you guys have made in the budget to help that happen and to keep our kids and our staff safe. So, so thank you for that. All right, on a lighter note, how about that? All right, thank you for the chance to share some additional updates. I'd like to begin by pointing out that I received some feedback from students who were disappointed that we didn't get enough snow days last year. So it's clearly important that you, we, we, we took care of what you wanted this year. So we're always trying to take care of our students. Seriously, I do know that many of the Knoxville, I know that many of us in Knoxville, the blizzard of 1993 is one of those iconic moments that we remember. I know I remember that too. And this snowstorm and its lingering effects will be another one that we look back at. Hopefully, we don't have another one of these next year. So hopefully, we look and see that. So I do hope that our students, families and staff were able to enjoy the unexpected time, to spend time together, to play in the snow and make memories. I mean, that was, I think during one of the media things, we were asked that question, you know, as a superintendent, what do you think? I'm like, you know what, doggone it, go enjoy the snow, you know, make some memories of your kids. We don't get this kind of snow all the time. Our teachers are more than qualified to get us where we need to go. We, our calendar committee's planning in advance. We put more days in the spring typically. Dr. Wilson does a great job leading that and making sure we do for illness and for weather days and that sort of thing. So I think people did do that. So I specifically want to say thank you to the KCS Knox County School and City of Knoxville employees who have begun working days, nights and weekends to prepare our roads and schools for return. I know we were able to do a press conference to show some of that work. I think our family message that went out today, I actually shot it from Central High's parking lot because I had gotten a lot of news coverage throughout the week about how much ice was on it. Kudos to Prentice, who's on our comms team, who actually climbed a tree to take a picture of the scraped driveway so we could show folks that, and did a great job with that. But our folks did work around the clock and do a great job. And I know, I especially want to, want to thank Chris Tow, who's our Director of Maintenance for the, and for their efforts on our school campuses. I know there was, you know, as will happen, a lot of questions about that. They did a great job. Everything worked as planned on that too. We stayed, we had conversations last Wednesday and Thursday about the fact that Brian and salt don't work when it was below 15 degrees. And Mike Pollard, who's on that team, said on the call, I don't think we need to waste people's resources just to act like we're doing something. It's going to be better on Saturday, and that's when we can actually use our stuff. And we don't have to wait for salt because we use it all on stuff we knew wouldn't work. So I think wisely, they made decisions to make that, and we supported that. So they've done a great job. Did a great job too, no significant damage to campuses with all the pipes and all the, the temperatures that we had, all those kinds of things. So really, just thank you to Chris and his team. Thank you to Ryan and his team with transportation. You know, those guys, we ask hard questions on those calls. And, and I said, it's starting to feel like COVID. We felt like we were on the call like from eight o'clock till nine o'clock every day on some of those. But, you know, it's really asking, you know, it's like, it's not enough. You know, Ryan, what roads are bad, you know? So all you want them, you get them from Jim Snow from the county. We had the whole list. So like, we actually do that full process when we look at those and, and forecasting ahead to where things are. And, I mean, Chief had his people out driving in different sectors of the county every day to see what was possible, what was not possible. You know, I, I think again, thanks to, you know, Ryan being smart on that, you know, Dr. Adams has led these guys well. You know, we saw a big salt truck overturn, and the only thing in our mind was, what had that been a school bus? You know, we put, we put 20,000 kids on the, on the school bus every time. So, you know, we, I think- So, you know, we, I think stuck true to what we said all along, safety is our number one concern. We didn't know we'd be doing it for two different things in one week, but, but it is our number one concern and we continue to do that. So thank you to, to our teams for that. I also know everyone's aware of the fact that we've used our last inclement weather day. And so in a little bit, when I finish mine, if we, I'll have Dr. Wilson kind of speak through, he's got an infographic of, of what we will propose for the board. I know Mr. Duper's not here, but we had a conversation about, because there, it could require a slight change to our calendar, that it would probably take a board vote in February. So we wanted to make sure there was time to discuss and talk through that today and then move it for you guys for a, a vote in, in February. So for our families and students, I want to thank you for your patience and flexibility. Oh, I actually should say, and memes. We appreciated those too on the, I'm not a big social media guy, but I had a lot shared that was fun. But no, it was actually fun. So thank you for your patience and flexibility over the last couple of weeks. We know it's been a difficult time. To our educators, I want to thank you in advance for what, for doing what you do best. Again, I was able to be at Halls Elementary today to open car doors and, and talk to teachers before I went out to do that and they're ready. You know, they're like, we're ready, we're, we're fine, our kids are going to be good. We know what we're doing and, and we do know that too. We agree 100%. So we're excited for that. I actually talked to one kid coming out of the car line and I said, I said, you know, were you ready to come back to school? He goes, yeah, I haven't seen my friends in 100 days. And I was like, well, good. So, so they're back and ready to go. So we know our teachers will pick up where they left off 10 days ago. You know, today was the beginning of that and we know that families, that they're in good hands. Our teachers always come through and do what we need to for our teachers, obviously for our students. Okay, so next to, two more things, sorry, I'll be quick. Board members, as you can see on the agenda, the Assistant Superintendent of Business and Talent, Ms. Jennifer Hemelgarn. Slowly, I feel like every one of these guys is getting their shot to do these presentations and they're all phenomenal, I just want to say. Blessed to work with a team that's as good. So for the presentation tonight, we'll communicate our new approach to the budgeting process. I think you'll see some things. I think we have made a commitment to try to be transparent. I think you've seen that through the things that we've done. And I think we've never really paused. We've always just started talking about dollars and talking about cents and talking about staffing, this person's going to lose this and gain that, and we don't have enough money to do this and funding's not enough from the state and the county's not doing this and we had a tax rate, you know, we, we just, we get into all that real quick and then we vote, right? We want to slow down this year a little bit and I think Ms. Hemelgarn is the right person to do this and her team who do a phenomenal job. You'll hear from Joe tonight, you'll hear from HR tied in with that, Scott will be talking tonight to that too. And then also Ron will be speaking to this. We want to take a moment and pause and talk through the process. We want to kind of demystify a little bit for you all and for the public, kind of what, what we go through and the process of how we think about things, where dollars are tied up. So tonight, and I'm sorry, I'm still in your thunder, Jennifer's going, that was my opening line, but you're not going to get, you know, this much and here's the cut and here's the projections, like we, you know, that's, we want to talk about how we go about making these, these, these budget aligned, student centered alignment to priority decisions of the priorities you guys have talked through. So you'll hear a lot about that tonight. And we also know this, a community our size, there'll always be a variety of perspectives and opinions on how dollars should be used. As a district, I can share that we'll remain focused on investing money and I sound like a broken record, on providing outcomes for students by aligning to our four priorities. So we're going to continue to focus on excellence and foundational skills, great educators in every school, career empowerment and preparation, success for every student. And it's not just because we're, we're stubborn, we firmly believe this is the way to continue the path of the outcomes that you saw this year, that our students made and our teachers made, is to stay focused in these areas. And I feel like my job as a superintendent is not to get caught up in a lot of distractions, but to stay focused on what we know research says works. And what I'm hearing when I go to school is, I was with Mr. Lynn today and he goes, hey, look, here's the things we're doing at Halls Elementary that align to the four priorities and we're telling everybody about them. And I'm like, I'm like, Nathan, that's awesome. Like, my staff's in, we're all, we're all in. And we're hearing that everywhere. And that doesn't mean everything's perfect, right? But it just means we think we're headed in a direction. So, so I'm excited for you to hear that tonight. Last thing, oh, sorry, two things, I promise. Speaking of success after graduation, our 865 Academy's initiative to transform high schools' experience is gaining momentum. This effort is aimed at creating career-focused small learning communities or academies within our high schools, along with the freshman academy to help ninth graders build confidence and gain exposure to college and career pathways. As you all know, at the end of their ninth grade year, they choose a career path to go into the academy through 10 through 11. So I'm pleased to announce that tomorrow, and I know you all are invited and we're going to have quite a few folks there as well, an event at South Oil High School tomorrow morning, on the Friday, the 26th, we'll be revealing the academies at our remaining six high schools. So Carter, South Oil, Halls, Gibbs, Powell and West. So just for the pause for a minute, because we've been on this journey for a little while, like this is three years into this process, all 14 of our traditional high schools will be announcing those and will, and the remaining ones will start freshman academies next year. So much excitement as we go out and talk to these new folks from, I know it's like Spencer Long has shared his plan and, and just all the work they put into. I actually went to visit Halls High and they gave me a T-shirt that had superintendent on it and the back says, my favorite 865 Academy. That may be a little much, but you know, he's always marketing. So, but I think a lot of excitement around some of those things and just think, just excited about the opportunity that's going to provide for our kids. So we're excited, there are many partners who will be there, some of them will be there tomorrow, that, that really working on helping our students have opportunities, our teachers have externship opportunities. And I think just the business community excitement we're seeing right now, you know, we've, we've never had, we've had levels of like meetings, but we've never really talked about it. And to see CEO champions like, folks like Wes Towers, who's, who's now chairing the CEO Champions Group for us, you know, we've turned over that, you know, Kef and us are in that, but he's the chair of it. And so they drive, both mayors are in that community. You're just really working on how do we provide more opportunities for, for students. So excited, hopefully you get to attend that tomorrow. It'll be a great event. We're excited about the six schools that are, that are coming on board. And Madam Chair, that concludes my report, but if it's okay with you, can we go ahead and let Dr. Wilson speak through the stockpile? I think there's a, I think you all have a handout. So I'll turn it over to him if you don't mind.
Yeah, I know, that sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ryswick, Madam Chair, members of the board. And actually Heath is nice enough to be able to pop that graphic up for us too, just, I thought that would be good for, for folks to take a look at. So obviously we'll talk a little bit about our plan and what we're, what we're thinking about moving forward. We thought too, it was good just to kind of orient back into like, where do these days come from? We always get questions, I think, to, to Dr. Ryswick's point, when we have snow days that we don't use, about why we don't take those back away and those sorts of questions. And so just again, trying to, to ease sort of the understanding of kind of why, why, how we got to where we are and then kind of how we're going to respond in that situation. So obviously it's been a long time since we've been in a scenario where the inclement weather days that we've planned, we've actually exhausted all of them over the course of the year. Very rare that we would do this before the end of January. And so we do want to be responsive to that, that we are in a, in a unique situation, I think, in terms of what we've experienced over the past several years. So I'll draw your attention to this idea of stockpile days. State law, it indicates a lot about what our school schedule looks like, how many school days we attend, what those school days are made up of, and several of those details in that. And one of those details is that we're required by the state to go to school every day for six and a half hours. Knox County Schools, and this is what's allowable by the state, and so we take advantage of that, you are allowed to go for a longer period of time each day. And in doing that, you can bank that time to earn stockpile days to give you some different options around ways to build extra things into your schedule. So when you look at our schedule, again, adding that 30 minutes a day, over the course of a year, we earned that maximum number that the state allows, which is 13 stockpile days. What we choose to do with those, again, defined in law as to what we can do, what we choose right now to do is to use eight of those in planning and in preparation for inclement weather. And then we use five for professional learning. And so that's broken down by our three regular in-service days that have always happened in the course of the year. That happen once students are back in school and we pull out and shut down for the day and have in-service those three days that we have. And then a couple of years ago, we decided to try out this, this idea of early release, to build some professional development time back into the afternoon, send kids home a little earlier in the afternoon, give kids some, or teachers some extended planning time. And we do that six days throughout the year, which actually each time we do that counts as a third of a day, if you will. So in total, six days, a third of a day for each one of those is two total professional development days that we have through that. And so those 13 days in combination, the eight inclement weather and the five professional development total our 13 stockpile days. Now that, as Dr. Ryswick's already pointed out, we have used all of the eight inclement weather days that we have, we do want to acknowledge that and be as prepared as possible as we can, should we have some additional weather. Again, we are still fairly early in the winter and we know we can have unexpected happen at any time. Additionally, in looking at our opportunities to buy back some time, we've also missed some school, right? And so we were looking at our earliest opportunities to, to bank back some instructional time to give teachers more time with students and to do that. And so our plan to move forward, at least in this moment, and as Dr. Ryswick mentioned, will most likely require board action since these are things that are part of the calendar. Our plan to move forward would be to convert the remaining early release days. We were set to have one in January, February and March. We would convert those third of a days back to, to get one day back. And so those would become full instructional days, kids would not be dismissed early. And then we have one remaining February in-service day that would have been a day students would not have reported. We're going to convert that to an instructional day as well. So what that will do is if you think again, like, think of it like a bank, that puts two more days back in the bank for us, that if we have snow, if we have wind, if we have something that we feel like safety has been compromised and we can't send kids to school, we've got two days to work with in that and we buy back additional instructional time, really at a time of year that it'll be more valuable to us than to try to think about extending the school year or doing anything like that. That, we're going to bring the plan, as John mentioned, sorry, Dr. Ryswick mentioned, to the board around these two days. If we found ourselves in a position where we had to, you know, we had three more snow days that we had to have, we obviously would have to have additional plans and, but we feel like at this time, we want to prepare, again, build back the instructional time. And then if we find ourselves in a position where we need to think about changes to the school year or, or additional days, we would come back with an additional proposal to the board and, and another proposed change to the schedule, rather than putting that on people's radar and then potentially not having to use that at this point. So I'll pause there for any questions that you guys have or Dr. Ryswick, if you're going to add.
No, no, you're going.
Actually, I do have something. I'm sure it was going to be a little bad.
That was great. Reverend Butler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just as the question, because I'm, I'm still trying to do the math.
Sure.
January 24th was a snow day. So really we have one day and two thirds, or that, that, that two thirds counts as a day?
So because we weren't in school and because we didn't take that third of a day, we technically can still count it as part of the, the formula. At least that's what we are counting on as we will most likely have to notify the state that this is what we're doing, but we should still be able to count that in there. I talked to, actually with Guy Respus, who's our information technology person who, who kind of handles changes with our calendar to the state. And they kind of treat those days a little bit weird in terms of their formula, as he was telling me, because, because once again, like when we have a half day in the school year, we're not given a half day of credit for that, we're actually given the whole day's worth of credit. They treat these kind of changes within the instructional year a little bit different, but his, his stance was, we would be able to count that as our, as a whole day. Yeah.
Okay. All right, now I did think my profound thing. I, I appreciate this from Dr. Wilson and them working on trying to get through this because it is tricky. I think what you'll see on this is, is the proposal we're bringing tries to still help families. And we know a lot of people plan spring break, a lot of people plan things early, you know, in the school year as well. So our hope is, you know, historically, I don't think we've used over three days in like the last eight years or something, like it's been a long time. So if we, if we recoup these two days, this would not cause us to go into spring break or end of year. To Dr. Wilson's point, unless we got, you know, another blizzard or something, we'd probably have to. But I think this at least allows families to keep their plans as they are and still buys us back a few days. So I appreciate the, the thinking in that. Can I say one more thing?
Oh, yeah.
Because I left off, sorry. So I did want to say this too. Personally, I want to thank you guys. It is teacher, or teacher, it is School Board Appreciation Week. And so thank you, thank you all for what, for what you do. I personally want to thank you for that. I'm kind of in a unique seat because I do know all of you all and I do see behind the scenes, the work that you put in and, you know, we text and email and all those kinds of things through the process. I get to know you more than just in the public meeting and I really appreciate that. It, it's a hard job and your constituents, you all have those, Knoxville is diverse in its ideas. And even it's fun to work with you and for you because you all have diverse ideas. But I think what I appreciate the most about you is that you focus on kids. And in the end, we do what's best and you all choose to do what's best for kids and you also do what's best for our teachers and our educators. And, and I'm just thankful to be an employee and working and our staff feels the same. So thank you all.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any other questions about the days? I appreciate the work that's gone into this and especially the plan that, that you guys have come up with because I think it is the least disruptive to families and it was, it's a very thoughtful plan. So I really appreciate it. And the graphic, thank you for the graphic. So pretty.
I will not take credit for the graphic, but it did help.
I liked it, Corey. And I see Carly back there. Well, if no one has any more discussion on that, we'll move on to Jennifer and her presentation on the budget process.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to invite you, invite the public in to a more detailed look at the work of the Business and Talent Team, along with, with members of, of some, some other teams as well in working through the budget process. Like Dr. Ryswick said, today is an opportunity for us to give you a more detailed look at the budget process itself. We know that, that this process ultimately culminates in us presenting a proposed budget to you all that we are then going to, that you all will then have to make a decision on. So this is, the purpose of this is to familiarize you with the process that we have started and will continue throughout this semester. What we, what we won't have today is the budget proposal itself. That will come a little later in the semester. So today is about the process. Why are we here to tell you about the process? Because we, we are accountable for 660 million of the taxpayers' dollars. So we want to be transparent in our approach to the process, transparent in the outcomes that our budget produces and transparent in how we, how we associated dollars to produce and transparent in how we, how we associated dollars to produce those outcomes. Our budget is a very people-focused budget. As you all, most of you all know, 80% of our budget is people, is personnel, 80% of the $660 million. So this, this is our, our opportunity to convey to you all and to convey to the public at how we arrive at the budget that is presented to you all later this semester. We have a new approach to budget, not, not necessarily new in intent. We have a student-focused stewardship. We're, we're entrusted, like we said, with $660 million of taxpayers' dollars to improve outcomes for all students. We have a, our intent is to, to produce those outcomes and we are now structured in a way to execute better on, on that intent. The budget process is requiring priority alignment for each line item in our budget, as well as alignment to producing student outcomes. The way that we are, the new way that we are approaching the budget is intended to allow us to be able to evaluate whether or not those intended outcomes came or whether or not we need to revisit those line items in future years to redirect those funds to something that has a greater impact on student outcomes. So our budget, budget process, revenues, needs, and proposal. Revenues and needs could, could technically be at the same time. This isn't necessarily in order. Our budget team monitors and projects revenues throughout the course of the year. But we, we receive those revenue numbers next month, late, a little later in, in the second semester. Needs are something that this budget process that, that we will talk through are informed by both internal and external stakeholder engagement. So internal would be our employees, our departments, external, community, and, and the, the, the opportunities that our community has to provide input. We'll talk through those in a little bit, but we have electronic opportunities. We have in-person opportunities, several, several different spots where we will collect information from our, our stakeholders, which ultimately culminates, like we said, in a proposal to you all to, of a budget for the following year that, that you all then are making decisions on. Our intent in this entire process is to present to you a budget which we believe aligns to our priorities, which we believe will produce the highest impact on our student outcomes. This is our budget timeline. Some of you are familiar with a lot of the things that are on here. We'll talk through a little bit of this and then pick up the rest at the end. Most of the, the buckets on this timeline, we are going to talk through at some point in the presentation. What we've already, what we've already done on this timeline is fall 2023, we did release the community engagement surveys, received a little over 2,000 responses on those. And that's, if you'll notice, that was a little, little earlier than we traditionally do those budget surveys. Typically, those are also in the January timeframe. Those were in November this year. Department, department meetings with assistant superintendents. We'll talk a little bit about how those have changed in a few, few more slides. Staffing committee work occurred over the fall semester and is still continuing this semester. Mr. Bolton will share some more details about the staffing committee work, this, the budget process presentation that we're doing now. And then next, next up in February are revenue meetings with county finance and receiving, receiving hard numbers on our revenues. So Mr. Snyder, our budget director, is going to share some more information on revenues, how, how we project, how we receive, and how we're allocated those revenues.
Okay, so to give you a brief overview of what I'm going to be covering here for the next few slides, we're going to talk about revenues like Ms. Hemmigan said. And then we're going to do a little bit of a deeper dive on TISA because it is fairly new to the district this year and the state. We're going to tie it back into the last conversations we had with the board, I guess, last March and April, when we were building the current year budget. We talked about TISA then. And then at the board workshop in September, or retreat in September, we talked about TISA and compared it a little bit to BEP. So we'll finish up with that. Before we get into the revenue discussion, I do want to clarify this because there's, if we, if we're not careful when we talk about this piece, we always, or sometimes confuse the public on this. The revenues we're going to take a closer look at this afternoon is going to be our general purpose revenues. And so what that excludes and what we're not going to be talking about here are those things that are federal grants. So if you, if you look at that, you're talking about IDEA, special ed grants, TITO or consolidated money, also our child or school nutrition program. And then our capital budget, which is not federal money, but is funded through a different mechanism. What we'll be talking about is on this chart. It's a little bit busy, but it does do what I said earlier. It ties, ties back to what we last discussed with the board on revenue. And it does tie also to what we talked with the board at the workshop or at the retreat concerning ESER and kind of what, what impact that may have on the upcoming budget. So if you think about general purpose revenues, what, what does, what comprises that category? And you guys, for the most part, know, it's really two big categories, state revenues and local revenues. State is about 48% of that equation this year, and that's sent to the district through TISA. And then local revenues is state or local taxes, which would be sales tax and property taxes. That's 50% of our current revenue source. 34% of that 50% is our local option sales taxes. And property taxes makes up the other 16%. You won't see property taxes on this graph because it's already a busy graph, but also because by the very nature of property taxes, it's typically a flat revenue. So it would just be another line added across the bottom that's not very dynamic. So what I want to look at and focus in on here is, at the bottom, you see 22, 23. So that was last fiscal year. 23, 24 is our current fiscal year. And we talked about this back in March. We've really, over the last two to three years, have seen anomalies in our funding in the general purpose budget. And that was due to the COVID year and fiscal year 21. So you go back to that year, we really underestimated and very conservative on how much sales tax we thought the district would receive. And that was due to input from the university and state as well. And then what happened, of course, after the fact was sales tax revenues were really strong, even through COVID. And we saw a shift in where that money came from during COVID, but it was really good. And so you combine the fact that we underestimated how much we thought we were going to get and then it even grew on top of that. So fiscal year 22 and 23, we were able to realize probably the largest year-over-year sales tax growth we've seen in a long time here. So if you look at the 22, 23 number there, the bottom piece of that, the BEP number, and that was the last year the state used BEP as their funding model, it was 3.5% growth. That's about normal, what we've been seeing over the last few years if you take the COVID years out of this, out of this picture. And then jump forward to this current year. And this is when we talked with the board back in March. We said, you know, really, sales tax is going to normalize. So you see that sales, sales tax number dropped down to about 3.9%. That's 3% to 4% is typically normal sales tax growth. But TISA or the state funding increased by 26%. So really, that increased a pretty significant amount, how much money we received this year. So if you look at the last two years, just to put this into, kind of into a dollars figure, we received 50 million new dollars in '23, 69 million in the current year. And we told you back in April, those, those numbers don't happen typically. Those, those, those are the largest year-to-year increases I've seen in revenue since I've been with the district. And we told you at the time, this is going to, this is going to be a problem for us come next year because our revenues are going to normalize. And you add to that, that top line, the ESER lineup there. If you look at the items that we funded out of ESER, and if you look at the total ESER amount, it's $114 million. And I just listed the four things here that were really position-related or personnel-related. And academy coaches, college and career coaches, tutors, and permanent subs. And we talked about that at the retreat back in September about, you know, if you look at all of those, it's about 15 and a half million dollars. So the district and the board's going to work through which, which of those do principals and teachers deem the most necessary? And are we getting the best ROI on it? And how do we include those in next year and future budgets? Looking forward a little bit to fiscal year '25, which is where we're headed. Right now, we're at about $9 million is where we think we're headed. And I don't want to get too, too deep in the numbers like Dr. Ryswick was saying here. But $9 million is a little bit lower than what we traditionally see when you, when you take out the, the COVID years. Sales tax is fairly normal, but the, the one at the bottom that's a little bit concerning there is the TISA increase. It's, it's only at this point about a half of a percent increase is what we've been told to expect. That's a little bit lower than what we, we were told last year, a percent to a percent and a half. And I think that decrease is probably just due to the, to the slower, slower growth in not only state-collected taxes, but also local sales taxes. Last thing on this slide, over to the right, the additional considerations. These are other items. One of them's a potential thing that could help in terms of the revenue reduction we just saw. The other ones are considerations of expenditures that we're going to have to find a way to also include in future budgets. If you recall, last year, when we met with you all about the budget, we talked about how do we take some of that 69 million new dollars last year and not, how do we set aside some of that for future years? And so the board and superintendent were smart to not put all of that into recurring cost. So Ms. Hemmigan said that 80% of our current year budget is personnel. If you go back to last year, it was 83%. So we purposely reduced that in order to build in some realized savings for this coming year. So that will help the fact that our revenue's being reduced a bit. We'll have a significant amount of realized savings to, to put back into the budget. The second item there is Governor Lee's initiative to ensure that the starting teacher salary is $50,000 by fiscal year '27. So that would be by July of 2026. We've told the board this several times, I think, but if our, is, is our, as our salary schedule currently stands, and that may change based on the salary schedule study, that's about a $45 million injection needed into salaries over the next three years. Pretty significant initiative. The salary schedule study is also going to come with a price tag, just based on what the board decides to adopt from that. Unbudgeted items, we always talk about those with the board when we meet with you guys in April, March and April. Those are items that try as, as hard as we may to predict what's going to happen in the fall. You can never get that right. You're going to have students that have different needs and that's going to come along with some unbudgeted positions and unbudgeted services as well. And then other fixed increases at the bottom, those would be things like health insurance. We have no control over that increase. Workers' comp insurance, software prices that go up, contracted services that we use. Those things are all increasing just due to inflation most of the time. And so those are also going to impact our coming budget. Take a little bit of a deeper dive into TISA here. I do want to mention at this point, if you go back to last year, we were talking about the state injected a billion dollars into education, and that's significant. The most significant change in the state's education model in 30 years. I think 1993 is when the BEP was, was rolled out. So it's a very significant change and it is recurring revenue. And that creates a little bit of misnomer, I think, for, for the public sometimes. That one-time billion-dollar injection was significant and it is recurring, but it doesn't mean that that amount is going to be injected in outgoing years. Every year, you know, we had a 26% increase and then it's going to be one to one and a half, or even a half a percent like we saw going forward. So that's, that's a challenge for the district to consider. And how do we, how do we make sure that we, we are investing and, and also in lieu of potentially revenue increases that aren't keeping up with inflationary increases? We'll talk a couple of minutes here about what, what's, what's similar between the BEP and TISA? And then what, what is some differences? And so this, the first look we'll have here is what are the differences? We talked about this at the workshop or retreat in September. Basic education program was a resource-based model. And so by that, we mean the state would look at Knox County schools and say, and this is just an example of a group they would take, how many K-3 students does Knox County schools have? And then they would say, okay, based on the ratio that we used to say the classroom size should be of 20 to 1, what, how many teachers does that give Knox County schools? And then based on the state's salary figure they're using, they would multiply that out and say, here's a dollar amount. And then they would add to that, in this case, take away from that, the fiscal capacity of Knox County to fund this locally. So we ended up getting about 63% of whatever that dollar value was. And they would send the money to us and then we would decide how to allocate it here. TISA changed that and turned it upside down. They, now the state, instead of looking at the group of K-3 students as a whole and saying, it's this many teachers and this many dollars, it's, okay, let's take this, this kindergarten student. What are the characteristics of this student? Are they a special ed student? Are they an ELL student? Do they have dyslexia? Are they an economically disadvantaged school? All of those things impact the funding of that one child across the district. And so that's how they're now sending money to the district. So it's, that's why it's called student-based instead of resource-based, which would be a teacher, principal, assistant principal, and that type of thing. Those are the main differences and they're pretty significant differences. And we'll talk more about that in just a second. The similarity is in, both of these are funding plans. So the state has not told districts, you have to spend the money differently because we're changing how we're sending it to you. We still have the flexibility as a district to say, these are our initiatives and these are tied to these priorities and that's how we want to spend the money. So that's, that's the similarity there.
Hey, Joe, I hate to break in real fast. I had a message from the audi, and some of the audience are having a hard time hearing. So I don't know if maybe there's a way. I know the microphone's on, so if everyone can maybe just speak.
They might get a little closer to the microphone.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
Maybe that'd be helpful.
Can we start over?
Yeah.
Okay, so this slide is a graphical representation. The first two blocks are BEP, just to kind of walk you through what I just talked about. It has three different students. And it shows you that regardless of what the different characteristics of those students are, they still are generating the same amount of funding for the district. Now, the BEP did set aside some money for special ed or ELL students, but it wasn't based on individual students at individual schools. And so you can see that number, student A, B, and C doesn't change, even though those three students are different. Looking at the middle block there, TISA, the student A is, is the base amount that is allocated this year, $6,860 per, per student. And then if you look down at student B, they also have some additional weighted funding added into it. And the weighted funding in this case is, the student is an economically disadvantaged student, which is classified by the state as someone who is directly certified for free and reduced lunch. That student would generate a 25% increase on top of the base amount for the district. And the student C is, is not only economically disadvantaged, but also has an additional unique learning need. And so those unique learning needs can increase the funding from that child from anywhere from 15% to 150%. And so you can see pretty, pretty big variance between student A and student C in that middle column. And then, like I said earlier, it's still reduced by the fiscal capacity index. So what that means is, when the state creates these funding models, they say districts, 70% of this funding is on the state and 30% is on the district, meaning those local option taxes we talked about, property taxes. But then they also look at, they take two markers that, that generate a capacity index based on the district and the area of the state you live in. And so, and they adjust that either up or down. So if you're in an area that's very rural, then you may get more than 70% from the state. In Knox County's case, we actually get less than 70%. So for this current year, we received 62% of the dollars you see there on student A, student B, and student C. That required local match comes from the tax, tax base that we have here locally. So fast-forwarding a little bit, the last box. What, what this looks at is if, if Knox County ever decided to change how we do allocate to schools, this is potentially what it would look like. And I mention this because if you look at some states that have gone to a state changing how they allocate dollars to districts differently, which is what we're doing now, instead of a resource-based, we're under a student-based model. Districts, in some cases, also look at that and think, maybe that model works best for us here as well. So what that means is, right now, we're going through our staffing committee process, staffing allocations for next year are being developed. And, and what that traditionally has looked like is based on the demographics at those schools, the number of students we're projected to have at those schools. The district has traditionally said, based on these ratios, school A, you get 20 teachers next year. And that's how, that's a resource-based allocation model. Some districts are moving away from that, instead saying, we want to mirror what our state is doing with our schools here. So how would that be different? So in that case, we may say, okay, so school A, here's your demographics of each one of your students. That generates X amount of dollars instead of 20 teachers. And with some guardrails in place, for example, you can't go over BEP classroom size. You have to have a principal, maybe one AP. You know, and the district and the board would build those guardrails out. You get this much money to decide what you want your staff to look like. Principals would love that, I think, because it does give them the flexibility to address the unique needs of their building, right? It also comes, though, with some, some needed support because principals are the curriculum leaders of their building and a lot more than that. But a lot of them don't want to be financial folks, right? And so that's where the district would come in with, with helping support if they'd ever moved to that. What would that potentially look like on that far right side? Even with that model I just described, if the district ever went, went through that process, there are still things that the district would keep at the district level or the central office level. So and if you look at the students in the middle there, A, B, and C, the, the graphics around those represent things that we do right now to support students. So at the top, the school staff is the one we just talked about. Like, maybe instead of sending out a specific number of positions, we help them build that staff with available dollars. We don't actually send the dollars to them and them send them back because that would, that'd be a waste of time. But we're just saying, here's your bucket of money and let us, let us help you build what you need at your school. School utilities and maintenance, I can't see us ever saying, you know, let's get KUB to send that bill to the school for the electricity, right? So that would still be handled centrally. Back to the left at the top, transportation, that's, that still makes sense to be handled centrally or at the district level. And then on around the circle, you can see some of those things that does make sense to purchase at the district level, but other things, it does make some sense to push that out to the school, give that school leader the flexibility to make the call on how much of those resources they need. Okay, I think, Hemmigan's back up?
Thank you. Okay, so, so based on some of the things that, that Joe shared with you, Mr. Snyder shared with you, you, you'll see that we've got some decisions to make. The we being the district and the budget that we present to you all and you all in approving the budget. I do want to reiterate that the process that we are talking about today, we believe is the right process to bring you all a budget that uses the resources we have to have the greatest impact on student outcomes. And also, this year, we have some factors that are gonna, that are going to provide for some difficult decisions. So, so two, two separate things. We believe this is the right process in years that are lean and years that are not. But this year specifically, we will have a couple of things to consider in, in building that proposed budget. The flattening TISA increase, as Joe mentioned. There is not going to be an increase from this year to next year as there was from last year to this year. The normalizing sales tax, in the same way, we saw an increase in sales tax year-over-year that is now starting to normalize back to what, what we would traditionally be used to. The ESER sunset in September will, will impact some decisions we need to make. There are a lot of district initiatives, some of those being staff members that are currently funded out of ESER. So figuring out how, how to continue the initiatives that are proving to be successful. And, and all of those will compete with, with several other things. Teacher raises, results of the salary study, staffing our schools. We, we talked about ESER already, but capital, capital needs and growing debt, and then the fixed increases that Mr. Snyder referenced. So, so how do we consider all those things to bring you all what we believe is the, the best proposed budget to use the resources we have? Several opportunities for. Several opportunities for both internal and external stakeholder engagement, like we discussed earlier. KCS staff, department conversations, division meetings, our KCS staffing committee, which, like I said, Mr. Bolton will share some more details on in just a minute. And then we have our annual budget survey, our regional family and teacher groups for that external engagement. Our district office engagement, this is where we have a, a new approach this year to better align our spending with our four priorities and impact on student outcomes. So our divi, our department heads, our tasks with presenting assistant superintendents with budgets that are priority-aligned, so every line item in the budget is associated with the priority that it supports, as well as classifying each line item in the budget based on success that it has shown, is, is expected to show, or is it not showing the outcome that we intended, and do we need to redirect those funds to a different area? Each department, along with the assistant superintendent, will be building two variations of the budget, a budget that asks for no increases and a budget that produces a 5% reduction. If, if there is no decrease in the budget, then the incentive to prioritize becomes less urgent. So if, if there is a decrease, what are we prioritizing? How could we accommodate a decrease in department budgets? Should we need to do so? So we're, we're excited about the opportunity that that process is going to bring to the, to building the budget. It puts a big-picture look back at all department needs, so, so the assistant superintendent is looking at those budget-neutral and 5% reduction budget options across all departments and, and looking to see where, where are we prioritizing our spending? Where do we believe the biggest impact on student outcomes will be achieved? Staffing committee, Mr. Bolton is going to share with you all what some, some internal stakeholders, some of our school principals, that are closest to where these staffing allocations have the impact, some of the information that they have shared with us throughout this engagement process.
Thank you, Board members, Madam Chair. So the, we really want to start at the process. This is the second year that we've gone through this staffing committee. And really, the purpose is to elevate those recommendations from those staffing committees. We want that input from the people that are on the ground. You know, they are our subject matter expert when it comes to staffing. We really want to get that input from those folks when we're making those recommendations to the senior leadership team for the purpose of budgeting when we're looking at a school allocation level. We also wanted to gauge some insight as to what was the effectiveness of some of those initiatives that were funded by ESAR. You know, those aren't necessarily ESAR initiatives, those are KCS initiatives, and we want to determine, you know, from that perspective, what was their priority, what did they determine as what would be something worthy of continuing to fund from general purpose or prioritizing those things in that consideration. But really, looking at the recommendations of the staffing allocations that allow for the funding of these positions. So what kind of tweaks can we do with staffing certain classes of positions at the school level to be able to accommodate those initiatives that they feel has been a success, that they want to continue in general-purpose funds? And so those are the things that we engaged in as for the purpose of the committee. So the committee, who, who comprised the committee? The committee was comprised of five elementary principals, two middle, middle school principals, and three high school principals. And, and kind of to expound on that, we had several meetings, at least a meeting a month, with the whole staffing committee together, which is comprised of those folks. But there were breakouts for those. So when recommendations elevated from the elementary, for example, those recommendations elevated to this larger group from additional principals. And we would, our, our business and talent team would be there for those small group meetings, and they, we, we could have in some elementary principal meetings as many as 20, or 20 people there comprised of maybe 10 to 15 principals at a time. But, so our input was not limited to these 10 people that were in the room when it comes to principals, but we expanded on that with individual, smaller groups, group sessions when we elevated those recommendations from the middle, from the elementary, from the middle, and from the high school. And then, of course, the business and talent team, strategy, and, and regional direction, directors and assistant superintendents were a part of that, that staffing committee as well. This slide is limited to just those things that we tackled this year. There were things that we tackled last year in the staffing committee in the first kind of iteration of that. So these are the things that we had tackled for the purpose of this year, and the conversations that we had. We had a long, long conversation about determining the staffing allocations for homeroom teachers and general education. What, what we really want to do when we're having those conversations, pull out all of those support positions, because what we really want to get to. And what I challenged the principals and challenged the staffing committee to, to try to think of, is to think of the basic school. What is the basics that is needed to run a school? And that way, we can layer on top of it those layers of support based on whatever the individualized needs are for those particular schools. But to get to thinking through baseline, what is baseline? And so when we talk about that, we talk about what drives that, is homeroom teachers and general ed teachers or related arts teachers when we look at those. We, we talked about that determined at-risk categories to meet those needs, the related arts allocation, assistant principal allocations, and educational assistant. And those are some of the things that we have tackled this year in terms of recommendations from the elementary. From the middle school and high school, we looked at teachers and assistant principals this year particularly. And some of the things that we looked at was trying to determine how we can fund some of those ESAR position, those positions initiatives that were funded by ESAR, that are KCS initiatives. How can we fund those inside of our current allocation? So how can we make that work? We had great conversations, a lot of good discussion about those things, and that's how we elevate those recommendations through that entire process for that point. Our work's not finished. Our work's just beginning. We had a lot of conversations about ongoing, certain things that we're going to continue to engage in. We want to, to, there was a great interest in the group as a whole to move to a student-based allocation. So what does that look like? Those are things that we're going to tackle in the future. Those are things that we're going to look at to determine what that looks like going forward. You know, what can we get accomplished this year? Because as you can see from this, the slide that, that Joe showed, I mean, we're not, we don't have the revenues that we've had before to play with. So we really need to have that alignment around that. And also, some of our staffing protocols. We, we've engaged some of those things, and we'll continue to engage some of those things, the way that we go about staffing positions in terms of procedures and protocols. We want to, to have the staffing committee to have insight in that. And so that is basically the staffing committee.
Very grateful to our school leaders for lending us a significant amount of their time in helping to work through the, the details that Mr. Bolton discussed, which will ultimately culminate in recommendations on, on what to, what, what part of staffing allocations will be included in the proposed budget. In, in addition, there is significant external engagement. So we discussed a little bit earlier, in November, the community surveys went out. We're very grateful to the over 2,000 people that took time to respond and give us input on the budget. We will use the responses from those budget surveys to guide discussions in February at the regional teacher and family focus groups. Those were, those provided invaluable input last year. Last year was the first year that we structured them in a, in a regional way, obviously. So the budget team traveled to each of the five regions to meet with the regional teacher and families for focus groups on helping us dissect the results that we got from the community input surveys. So very, very excited for that to continue and, and also thankful for the stakeholders that participate in those focus groups. In March, there will be the community budget meeting. So you all, you all are aware of that, that we typically have the budget meeting in the spring as well. Very, very thankful for the community members that come and provide input at that meeting also. So that brings us almost to the end of the budget timeline that we saw earlier. That's the process for gathering, gathering our information, gathering information on revenue, making projections, gathering input on how we leverage the revenue, the resources we receive, to have the greatest, greatest support of our four priorities, and, and like we've said several times, the impact on student outcomes. Those will result in the district preparing a proposed budget that we bring to you all, the board, to vote on. And, and in the interim, as you all know, we do have those individual meetings with you all as well in advance of bringing that proposed budget. So in closing, we, we will end with where we started. We are, are very excited about our new approach to budget, our student-focused stewardship of, of the dollars that the taxpayers are entrusting the district with to provide support to our students. It is a very people-centered budget. We, we talked about this number earlier, but 80% of our budget is people, and we know that our people are, are the ones that deliver this mission to the students and impact student outcomes. We are very thankful for the people that choose to join Knox County Schools and complete this work with us, and the budget reflects that. It, it is primarily made up of people. We are looking forward to bringing you all a budget that is priority-aligned and is aligned to impact on student outcomes. We are tasking ourselves with evaluating that through this process on an annual basis to make sure that, that the dollars we're allocating towards certain things are producing the outcomes that we intend. And if they're not, then we are going to redirect those funds to, to line items on the budget that will have, that we believe will have those impacts. So questions on the budget?
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Samuel, and thank you all for all the work. And, you know, I know there's been a lot more people involved than just what's been represented today, and I think you all have represented them well in the process. I've got just a couple of questions. One is to clear up that, something that I think may be a confusion. I don't think I'm confused on it, but I want to make sure that I'm, I'm right. Mr. Snyder was talking about the difference between kind of a resource-based allocation and a student-based allocation from the state. And he said, sometimes when states do that, districts may move to that same type of model within their district in terms of how they're allocating funds to schools. But the way that was discussed, we, we're not making that decision yet. But you mentioned student-focused, what was the three-word term?
Student-focused stewardship.
Student-focused stewardship. So I want to make sure we're not getting confused between the two things. So the model that you all are presenting is not the model that Mr. Snyder was saying that some districts have moved to, although we may choose to do that in the future, correct?
Correct. We, we believe that, that the student-focused stewardship is, is bringing you all a proposed budget that, that aligns the resources we have to have the greatest impact on student outcomes. It is not what is traditionally known as student-based budgeting.
Right.
So the, the TISA model is a student-based funding model, and like Mr. Snyder said, most districts that, that are funded in that way do explore whether it makes sense to move to a student-based budgeting model. We are not there yet, but that is something that the staffing committee is helping us continue to explore over the course.
Thank you. I just, because the terms are so similar, I just wanted to be
Right.
real clear on that, that
Thank you.
you all were saying the same thing and not two different things. The other thing that I wanted to ask was, well, now I done forgot it, because I got wrapped up in student-centered. It'll come back to me. I'll ask it in just a second.
Oh, go ahead. Yeah, yeah.
It came right back to me. Yeah, so when, when you all talk about kind of what you're asking people to consider when they're bringing the budgets to the district around both looking at outcomes, are we putting our dollars in the things that have the greatest effect? And also aligning them to the priorities? To me, that's what I was hearing is the biggest shift in this process. Is that accurate?
Yes.
First, I just want to say, well, I just want to say thank you for that, because any organization needs to be doing their budgets that way, right? We need to be focused in, on our priorities, and if it's not working, let's put the money somewhere else. So kudos for that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you all so much for all the work, and I really appreciate, I think that in the past when we've had this kind of conversation at, earlier in the process, it's been helpful when we get into the actual budget season. So I really appreciate that and the update. I think this will be a more challenging budget cycle than we've had in a, in a handful of years, so, so I think this conversation today will also help, because I think, as you guys know, it's going to be a really, really, a challenge. So I appreciate the, I, as, as Mr. Watson said, I, I do appreciate aligning the priorities with each budget, each line item. And I also appreciate that you're asking assistant superintendents to bring a realistic budget that is either neutral or down 5%. I think that that's where we have to be at this point, and that's a realistic view. So I really appreciate that. So I, although I'm not looking forward to the budget cycle, because it's going to be hard, I, I appreciate the, the work that you're doing that will help make sure that we can see clearly where we need to be in, as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Triplet?
Yeah, I appreciate the work, and I do appreciate this approach. I think it's great. Mr. Watson, I appreciate the fact that it came back so quickly. It means you're still young if it comes back that quickly. So, that's good. We'll take it, right? Couple, couple of questions. I noticed, I know that we mentioned that the capital needs come out of a different location, but you have capital needs and the effect that they have on, on the budget in, in this presentation. I know we, we put a big chunk down on that to try and, because I know at one point we're, we're pulling out of the general purpose to continue to pay for that, because we were kind of over that limit with the county. Have, have we reduced that? Are we, are we out of pulling from the general purpose at this point yet? Or are we, I don't know who answers that?
I'll, I'll let Mr. Snyder take that in more detail. There, there still will be debt service and, and capital-related items that come out of the general-purpose budget, and I'll let Mr. Snyder answer more specifically on that.
So it's a great question. So if you remember last year, I think after budget approval, the county actually moved some pennies from our property tax revenue back into the county's debt service fund. And so the way that generally works is the, the, the property tax in and of itself, a portion of that is to, is supposed to go to fund school buildings and, and school capital cost. Historically, the school has not received enough of the property tax to cover all of our costs, and so we had to move some of that into the general-purpose budget. So looking at what did that look like this year, our portion of the general-purpose budget was $10 million that we had to, to also use it to help. And so I think our total, our total investment this year was $35 million. So we put $25 million extra into it this year as a one-time payment, and it helps in a couple of ways. It goes back to that realized savings that we're going to see rolling into next year. And I, and we can talk about what, how much of that do you use next year and maybe save to fiscal year '26. But it also, using it to pay down, make that big of a payment on one-time debt, also reduces a significant obligation on future debt payments in, in that case.
Gotcha. Okay. Very good. Thank you. I appreciate that. And then, just one other comment. I, this student-centered, I know there's some discussion on the terminology there, but just the idea of allowing principals the opportunity to make some of those decisions for themselves, I am, I'm a fan of that. I think we have some incredibly smart and talented principals that could, could figure that out for themselves locally in their, in their building, you know, kind of better than maybe we could at the, at the district level, and, you know, certainly give them the freedoms, kind of untie their hands in some ways, and obviously with support and guardrails and all those things. But that, that model's very interesting to me, and I, I think, I think it'd be certainly great to, to dive into that and explore that pretty good.
I would agree with that. Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's a piece of the timeline that kind of worries me a little bit, and I may not remember correctly. It seems that in the past, the voting meeting has been somewhere mid to late April, so that if there was something that needed to be changed, we still had time that we could vote on it at the May meeting before it had to be to commission. So in this timeline, if we don't vote until the May meeting, then that, that may make it quite difficult if there's something that needed to be changed, if there was something that we didn't agree with.
That's a good point, Ms. Owen, and that may be an error on our timeline. I believe that the special-called budget meeting is already set for a date in April.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's on the calendar for April 25th, I believe.
Well, we will correct that on our timeline. Thank you.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Going back to the comment I made earlier about priorities and outcomes, you know, in a, in a budget year, a budget year, budget years where it's not as tight, you still have trade-offs to make, but it's easier to make those decisions, right? Because you can do more of what you want to do. But in education finance, and like most finance, everything's a trade-off, right? There's great things, and you can't do them all. And so what I would, I don't know that we typically, at a board level at least, have had conversations in that type of way where we get options where it's like, hey, we could do this, and this is the outback, and this is the outcome, and this is what the cost might be, or we could do this, but we probably can't do both. And I think especially in a tight year like this, I would advocate for you all as you're talking and engaging the board to help us understand where some of those levers are. And I think that's where we actually might be able to chime in and have some, hopefully some positive influence in it. But I think it'll be tough if we just get, you're all, here's what we really want to do as a district. It's kind of hard for us to know where the other opportunities might lie. And I think because you guys are already aligning, are already asking everybody in the district to align their budget line items to priorities and outcomes, to me, that should be a much easier conversation because the work's already been done. I think we just need to structure that conversation that way at the board level.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Christie?
Yes, and thank you, and I echo the sentiments of everyone else. And we talked about this when I came in, but when we say 80% of the budget is people, just to put that in perspective, because this is an election year, and I've already heard county commission candidates talk about the big percentage of the budget that the school district gets, can you remind us what our monthly payroll is or ballpark?
Our monthly payroll for all employees across the district is almost $36 million.
All right. And that does not include transportation, or does that?
That would be our employees.
Right. So that does not include bus drivers.
Correct.
So I do think that that, you know, to say 80%, but when you talk in terms of hundreds of millions of dollars, I do think that that is important for people to realize how much comes out every month just for payroll. So thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, I really appreciate this discussion, and I appreciate Dr. Ryswick and Ms. Himmelgarn that, you know, today was about the process and that 30,000 overview look, and then we'll start kind of getting into the meat and potatoes here in the next few months about the budget. But I think that this is such a good time to start talking about this, starting to get into it, and we've had a real robust conversation about the budget here today, and I really appreciate that and all the work that's gone into this. So thank you for that. And with that, we'll go into the next presentation, which is our salary study.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you. I joked with my colleagues, Mr. Myers and Dr. Adams, that it was time for somebody else to have a turn, talking with you and sharing the work. So very excited to share with you an overview of the work that has been done by Evergreen and what we can expect in the near future. Again, this is an overview of how we got here, what we've done so far, and what we can expect. This will not have the recommendations of Evergreen Solutions. They will be here in person at the March meeting to present those to you all. And then we will also have some hard decisions in which of those recommendations we are able to incorporate into the proposed budget for FY '25 and then which we may have to incorporate in future years if we choose to incorporate them. So what was the purpose of doing this? We want to revisit that. Like we said, our budget is a people-focused budget. It always has and likely always will be. Our people are our biggest asset. This contract was an opportunity for us to do several things through Evergreen, our third-party partner that we contracted with. And I'll give a thank you again to the board for allowing us the opportunity to do this by including funding for this salary study in the budget. The contract gave us an opportunity to identify national best practices in leveraging compensation strategies to enhance employee recruitment and retention, to create consistency across our job classifications and compensation through the district, to determine market value for our various job classes. What is market value for all of the positions that we have in the district and where is our salary schedule in relation to that? And to also simplify our existing salary structure. If you all, which I'm sure most of you are, are familiar with our salary schedule, it is a lot of pages and a lot of different places that you might have to go to predict what a salary might be. So what is the compensation and classification study? This was a two-part study by Evergreen. If you'll remember, we asked for your approval in an initial contract for the compensation study, and then as Evergreen started the work, they said, you know, we may need the second piece to make sure we're getting a full picture. So we added the classification portion of the job study. So the compensation study is going to do two things. One, it is going to help determine where we are in relation to market value. So it benchmarks compensation against our peers, and 19 of the 20 peers that Evergreen reached out to for salary information to benchmark us against responded, which is a pretty good response. It is also going to address compression. So what is the variation in salaries between employees with significantly different levels of experience and responsibilities? Do we meet recommended differences in those stages? The classification study will look at job class progression, which is our organizational reporting structure. Some of that is also dealing with compression. Do we have the appropriate level of differences in salary points but also job responsibilities? That's where this title consistency comes in. Are we tasking the same level of duties to all employees with the same title, with the same job description? So how does the study work? Evergreen gathered several, is still, and gathered several different data points. So they did district research. They have reviewed our job descriptions. They have reviewed our salary schedule. They have looked into district practices. They've done market research. In addition to the 19 of 20 peers that they received information from, they've done additional market research on positions that may also exist outside of education. They've done significant employee outreach. They've done outreach surveys. They did a job assessment tool, which we'll talk about in just a little bit, and they've conducted several focus groups, 21, I believe. All of the work that they have done will culminate in recommendations to us. Their recommendations will, I think I may be getting ahead of myself. Let's talk about employee outreach first. So the outreach survey, we got over 30%, about 30% response rate. So all of our employees had the opportunity to participate in the survey. We did a job assessment tool that was released to 479 recipients, and we got an over 50% response rate. And the reason that you see that release to less recipients than the outreach survey is that there are, the job assessment tool is looking at that second piece, that classification piece. So there are a large number of our employees that hold a title that is consistent across the district. So what Evergreen was looking at were titles that may not be consistent across the district, job responsibilities under certain titles that may not be. And for focus groups, they had 21 sessions, both virtual and in-person, and over 300 participants were live with Evergreen to provide feedback. Possible decision points that we'll have. So all of those things will culminate in recommendations from Evergreen Solutions to Knox County Schools. And like I said, they will be here in March to present those to you, but we'll have several decision points. Do we convert to a new salary schedule? We're almost positive that will be a recommendation to simplify our existing salary schedule. Adjusting salaries to market values in areas that we're not at market. What is the recommendation on moving to market? How long would or should that take, and how much will it cost? How much can we absorb in an annual budget? Addressing compression. Implementing best practices in recruitment and retention. So in building a salary schedule, there may be considerations for recruitment and retention within the steps in a salary schedule. And consistency across organizational structure and job classification, so that classification portion of the study. So next steps, we will get our final recommendations from Evergreen in February. They will be here to present to the Board of Education in March, and then we will have to take their recommendations, take the board's feedback, and any additional feedback we receive to incorporate those recommendations into a proposed budget to the board. So that was very high-level overview, but specific questions on the salary study.
Reverend Butler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation. Can you define and explain compression one more time, please?
Sure. I'll go back. So compression is variation in salaries between employees with different level of significance or responsibilities. It can look at like two types of things. So when pay between subordinates and supervisors is too close, so are we appropriately providing opportunities for growth for our employees? And then also, when pay of highly-tenured staff and new employees are too close, are we providing appropriate progression in salary schedules themselves to give an opportunity for growth within positions?
So, for example, if we go to $50,000 for teachers who are coming in, then we have to look at what are those who have been here for a while, what are they getting? And when does that, what is the number of years or years of experience that demands an increase or not?
Right. So we will, if adjusting, if we take that example, so we know by FY '27 that the starting teacher salary will be $50,000. In order to accommodate that, one of their recommendations would be that the rest of the salary schedule moves to, so that we're not just increasing, so that we're still creating an opportunity for growth for employees.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Himmelgarn. So one question in response to the last question. Would that compression piece also look if there's too much distance between salary ranges in those examples that you mentioned, or is it just whether not it's too close?
Both.
Okay.
Both, yes.
So it's not just compression, but it's also expansion?
Right. And is our, you know, if we have a salary schedule of step zero to step 20, is the midpoint truly the midpoint? Do we have the appropriate level of differences between each of our steps as well?
Okay. I would assume not, but would the study also tell us, I would assume that we don't have any positions, the study may tell us, but whether or not any of our positions are over-market, I'm not asking this because at some point I'm going to advocate that we reduce them. I'm just asking, does it look at both? Does it look at positions that are under-market and also where we're paying over-market for positions?
Yes. So it looks at where our positions are compared to market, so that will tell us if they are over or under.
Okay.
Yes.
And then I heard your description about how you chose who to send the job assessment tool to. I didn't really get what the job assessment tool actually does. What is the job assessment tool?
That's a good question. So the job assessment tool takes an employee's job description and allows the employee to provide additional context. Do the duties that you do every day match your job description? Or what do you spend the primary portions of your time on? It also then circles back to the supervisor. And supervisor, do you agree that this is the task that the employee has been asked to do and they live within their job descriptions?
Yeah. At the end of the day, the employee gets to say, yep, this is my reality or not. This is not accurate.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Since there's no more questions, thank you, Ms. Himmelgarn.
Thank you. Really appreciate the opportunity to share with you all today.
Thank you. I've heard a lot of good things this evening, so appreciate all the work that's gone into that. Next on the docket, we have public forum. Mr. Triplet?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do have some public forum speakers. Dwayne Emmert. Dwayne, if you will state your name and your county of residence, and then you will have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Dwayne Emmert, Knox County. And I'm here to tell you and to explain to you a process. We've already been working on your budget, and we started in early August, and we met with six districts, schools throughout the county, and we served them pizza. And these are three of your main stakeholders. We invited students, we invited parents, and we invited students, parents, and teachers. And it was a lot of pizza, and we welcomed them, but it was one of the most gratifying things I've been part of. And I taught school in Anderson County for 39 years, and this was a process where your stakeholders just got to be heard, and that is so important. We called these listening sessions. And what we did was divide into three groups, teachers in one group, community parents in another group, and then, of course, students. I love speaking to the students. And I have really good news, Dr. Ryswick. A lot of what these students and teachers and parents said were very, very positive. Overall, parents, students, and teachers were pleased with Knox County Schools. You have a daunting task with this budget, but those three stakeholders are so, so important in this budget. We don't want to forget them. And this is what we want to do, be involved, involve the parents, involve the students. Overall, the recurring themes are what you would expect. More and better-supported teachers, that's in the budget, please don't forget that. More student support professionals, such as social workers, counselors, therapists, and greater support for that whole child. And what the concerns were from the parents and the students, even the students said their teachers, they knew they were overworked and stressed at times. And that's something we would like to address, too. You know, we want to retain the best teachers and make sure those teachers are happy. But smaller class sizes, teachers who were less burdened, which I just mentioned, better teacher pay, educational assistance in the school and administrative support, special needs students and the English language learners need more teachers. These are things that you'll be talking about in this budget, but, you know, keep in mind those three stakeholders that are so important to us. I enjoyed this because it was just an open conversation, and I left there at times a little discouraged from what I heard, but overall, I was so pleased with what I was hearing from Knox County, about Knox County Schools. So we're here to work with you and to help you and support you, and that's what we want to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Lance McCold?
Want to go last?
Sure. Tim Buss? Tim, if you'll state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
My name's Tim Buss. I'm from Knox County. I haven't been here for a while, but it's good to be back. I am here tonight to speak about the KCEC's recommendations for the budget. That was, I believe it was sent to everyone on the board, and specifically about the special education and educational assistant staffing. Just to remind you a little bit about myself, I've lived here for 20 years. I have two daughters in Knox County Schools. One is a senior that's had an IEP for learning disabilities since the second grade, very familiar with special education in Knox County at all levels. Since March, I've also been a substitute teacher in Knox County Schools. I've done almost 100 jobs at a dozen different high-needs schools at all levels, elementary, middle, and high school, including time in special ed classrooms and at Richard Yocely. So I'm pretty familiar with the high-needs schools and students and staff in the county. Finally, I'm a community member. I'm a citizen of this country, and I'm a strong believer in public education and the part that it has played in the past and the part that it needs to play in the future of our country. So as a parent of a special needs student and a sub-teacher, I can attest personally to the importance of special education teachers and EAs to the success of students. My older daughter has had some good ones, some not-so-good ones, but when you don't have any, or when you have to put, you have to have bigger special education classes or bigger classes in general, it makes it even harder for those people to help the kids with special needs. with special needs. If you've never been in a classroom, you would be, I'm sure you'd be very surprised and hard to believe the diversity of the kids and the variety of their needs. And that's a regular classroom, okay? Working daily in that environment, and I have done it quite a bit, and trying to serve all those needs for regular students can be exhausting, especially with 18, 20, 25 kids. It's even harder in a sped classroom, okay? It can be crazy at times, and without the proper staffing, I mean, you're, anyway, it's not going to be possible to serve those students the way they deserve and they need to be served by the law. These students deserve a good education, and we need to provide the proper staffing so that they can get it. Sped teachers are a critical part, educational assistance are a critical part of the system, and KCS needs to offer good compensation in order to attract and retain those people. I was encouraged by the salary study. I think that's a good start. Once you have that worked out, you need to fill the open positions. With my remaining 15 seconds, I'd like to say that my experience as a parent, a teacher, and a community member is completely in line with the recommendations of KCEC. It's clear that there's a staffing shortage. Please have the political courage to act, ask for what is necessary to do the job right. Thank you.
Thank you. Teri Whitaker. Teri, if you'll state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
My name is Teri Whitaker, and I live in Knox County. Nearly every group at the listening session raised concerns about teacher pay. They wanted better teacher pay to help with retention and to eliminate the teacher shortage. KCS should budget for a starting teacher salary of around $60,000. Pay for more experienced teachers should be increased by the same percentages as is the current salary schedule. Every school system wants great educators. Teachers are like every other employee. They want respectful pay, and they want good working conditions. Good working conditions mean that employees are treated with respect and dignity, which starts not by overworking them. Reducing the student-teacher ratio and providing adequate student support makes for good working conditions. Respectful pay means the employees get paid what they're worth, certainly not less than they would get paid elsewhere. Unfortunately, KCS teachers are underpaid by every measure. Statewide, Tennessee teachers are paid about 25% less than similarly educated and experienced professionals. Even adjusted for the public school teachers' better benefits, they make about 15% less than the similarly educated professionals. KCS teachers get paid too little by local measures as well. Starting teachers here earn less than $45,000. Mariville City, Oak Ridge, and Alcoa City Schools pay starting teacher salaries at $48,000, $50,000, and $52,000 respectfully, respectively. To be competitive with our neighboring districts, the KCS teacher's starting salary should be at least $52,000. The Knox County Sheriff's Officers' Pay shows that even $52,000 is a little bit low. KCSO Juvenile Service Center Correctional Officers earn a minimum of nearly $50,600 before overtime. Correctional officers need only a high school diploma. With overtime, correctional officers may earn substantially more than the minimum. KCS teachers are regularly required to work overtime. Adjusting for their required education and uncompensated overtime, KCS teachers should earn a minimum of $60,000. But even $60,000 may be too little. For a teacher who is a single parent with two children, a living wage in Knox County requires $83,000 a year. So KCS should budget for starting salaries at least $60,000. Pay for more experienced teachers should be increased by the same percentages as in the current salary schedule. It will be very interesting to see what Evergreen proposes. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Shelton. Todd, if you'll state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
Todd Shelton, South Knox County. It's good to see everybody. After listening to the sessions, nearly every group of participants identified the need for more and better-paid teachers. They wanted the children to have smaller classes and teachers who were less burdened so they could give students more personalized attention. Knox County schools should budget for a student-teacher ratio of 10 to 1. When I was first teaching and looking at books about education way back, that was the ratio suggested then. General education teachers should have this ratio in Knox County schools, not including specialized teachers for English language learners or students with disabilities. Public school students deserve small classes as much as private school students. The Hahn School of Princeton in New Jersey, a private school, made the case for smaller student-teacher ratios better than we could, so I'm going to quote it. "The student-teacher ratio has been found to be one of the strongest indicators of student success and engagement. Logically, it's a little wonder why the fewer students each teacher works with, the more closely they're able to adapt their teaching to the specific learning styles. They're also able to develop healthy one-on-one mentoring relationships and offer insight and help in ways that would be impossible in a larger classroom. Additionally, a lower ratio will lighten the workload for teachers, enabling them to focus on the quality rather than the quantity of their teaching and grading. In a smaller group, students are more likely to feel comfortable voicing their opinions, asking questions, and making their needs known. This setup also provides added care for students who may be struggling with learning obstacles in any given subject. Rather than falling through the cracks, the larger classroom, in a larger classroom or with one with higher student-teacher ratio, students benefit from the fact that teachers are able to notice and offer tailored assistance most effectively to these students. This benefit may also be true for students who excel and need added challenge harnessed for their full potential. With lower student-teacher ratio, teachers have the capacity to address the situation, offering these students extra materials and helping them succeed to the best of their abilities. The teacher will also have higher bandwidth to go above and beyond in communicating this area of strength with the student's parents and considering the next best steps." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lance McCold. Lance, you'll have, state your name and county of residence, and you'll have three minutes.
Lance McCold, Knox County. Madam Chair, members of the board. Knox County has an excellent superintendent who has set worthy and ambitious goals for our public schools. Achieving those goals will be impossible if the board fails to provide the resources he needs. Those resources include adequate numbers of professional and support staff. Even with innovative strategies, the goal of great educators in every school is impossible without at least competitive pay and good working conditions. Teachers love their work so much that they make many sacrifices other workers wouldn't. But love is not enough to retain and recruit highly effective teachers in areas of greatest need. When pay is so low, teachers must take second jobs. Our students, our children cannot achieve excellence in foundational skills without having enough great educators to meet their children where they are. This means staffing schools with teachers should be much closer to 10 to 1 than the current 18 to 1. Every graduate, making every graduate a lifelong learner, effective communicator, collaborative teammate, creative problem solver, and community-minded citizen requires that we invest in the sufficient numbers of teachers, counselors, and social workers at every school. A key to our superintendent's plan to achieve success for every student is the whole child support teams at every school. Effective whole child support teams require adequate numbers of teachers, student support professionals, and administrators to have time, in addition to their other duties, to meet student needs. Only then will KCS be able to deliver on the promise of success for every student. To be successful, Superintendent Ryswick definitely needs leadership. He needs to be effective community. He needs to create opportunities to support engagement from the community. He needs all this because he has to gain community support for the funding our schools must have if we are to deliver success for every student. But he can't do it alone. He needs every board member working as hard as he does to make the truth known to the community. Superintendent Ryswick has all the skills and commitment he needs to meet the goals you have set for him. What listening session, procession, participant saw that I hope you see is that he lacks the staff to make those goals happen. It's the board's responsibility to provide staff. The staff, if it fails to do so, failure to meet those goals will not be the fault of Superintendent Ryswick. It'll be the fault of this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that concludes public forum.
Thank you, Mr. Triplett. We'll move on to board forum. Reverend Butler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I feel like I need to go back and talk about the budget process a little bit more, but I know this is public, this is board forum. I feel like also, honestly, a number of those folks have been colleagues, and so we've had discussions like that before. I really appreciate where we are in the budget planning process, and thank you for all the work that has gone into it and what we're doing. But I do believe that having a budget neutral and a 5%, what was the term you used? 5% reduction?
Reduction.
Thank you. 5% reduction. That would be, that's smart. But also, I think we need to also say, we want to have an accurate amount of what it's going to take to do what we say we want to do. And if that's more than the 5%, more than budget neutral, we have to acknowledge that. Because either we have to have the budget that we say we're going to need, or we gotta, if you're not going to raise the budget, you got to lower your expectations. So based on what we need, we should budget, we should state that budget amount. If we don't get that, then of course we have to do something different. But if you don't X for it, you don't get it. I'm not trying to go to church, but if you have not because you Xed not. So I think that the planning process need to be included, need to really include, especially with the salary, if the salary study comes back and say, hey, we need to start at these amounts to be at market value, then that means that that's what we, that's what the study said. That's why we pay for the study. So I'm going to really try my best now to be disciplined and not keep on talking about items that we've already talked about. But I really feel compelled to say, especially when I look at the district that I'm in, and I know that those schools better than any other schools, and still don't feel like I know as much as I need to know about them, we have severe teacher shortages. Period. And so whatever we need to do to make sure we get teachers in those, in every class, but especially those critical skill classes, we have where we are, have schools that had athletic grades, schools that have in a lower 5% and lower 10%. So this is really an area that I think for me, and I know for all of our board members, that we want to get the best we can with the bucks we have. So thank you for what you're already doing, and looking forward to see if we can do the best job we can. Thank you.
Ms. Owen? Thank you, Reverend Butler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In case Reverend Butler would like the microphone back after I finish, I just want everybody to know that there was a time when board forum was the longest part of the meeting. So. And I want to echo what he is talking about. If we could have, besides a budget that is neutral and a budget that is 5% less, I would like to see the wish budget. Here is the budget that could let us do what we really want to do. Maybe that wish budget is outlandish. So be it. I think seeing the budget of what we really want to do puts the budget of what we actually have in perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Reverend Butler, you started a trend here. I don't know if it's going to keep going, we'll see. But one of the things that a very smart board member of mine years ago at Restoration House said, and kind of got us on a five-year forecasting path, is that really the budget, what we're doing in that is we're asking ourselves, what does it actually take to accomplish our mission? What does it take financially? Now, that doesn't mean you can always get what you want, and it doesn't mean you can always pay what it takes, right? But you at least need to know that because ultimately that's the target. And if you're doing multi-year forecasting, which is a lot easier in an organization like mine than in an organization like yours, you need to have something that you're shooting for multiple years down the road, right? And that's why I appreciate things like what we're doing, like the salary schedule and the facilities assessment and all those types of things, right? Those things allow us to set those long-term goals. But I do agree with my colleagues that unless we also state, what is it actually going to take to accomplish our mission, regardless of whether or not we have the funding to do it, and that's not really out in the public eye, it's very hard to kind of drum up the energy to go out there and say, hey, this is what we got, and we know, and we're grateful on all the things, and we're going to do this with it, and we're going to prioritize and all the stuff, but here's what we really need to get to, right? And I do think it's important for us to, I know it's a lot of work, I mean, you all budget all year round. I mean, Snyder and his crew, I mean, they're just cracking numbers, right? All the time. Man, I get it. But I think it would also behoove the district and the school board and our other people who can help, other folks who can help impact the revenues that actually come in from a legislative standpoint, to understand, like, what is it going to take to accomplish our mission, first and foremost, even if we don't have all the revenue to do it in this particular moment? And so I don't know how we get to that as well, which I think is what my colleagues are advocating for, but I do think it's important for us to consider and to be aware of. Because whether or not it's budget neutral or 5% below, I think all of us in this room probably agree, that's not actually what it's going to take to accomplish our mission. It's probably something different than that, right? Even though we can't get it. So I wasn't planning on talking about that at all, but you did preach a little bit, and I was just, wanted to tag team with you. I just wanted to, I know there's been many, many thank yous go out, but I just wanted to thank both our crews internally, but all those people in our county. And we know that we're not the only county that was impacted by this across our state and other communities. Operating at preschool now, I had just a little bit of that. I was on my own personal tractor, you know, scraping and doing all the things and shoveling. And to do anything like that on that scale, and you spoke to it a little bit earlier, Dr. Ryswick, takes a tremendous amount of fortitude, takes a tremendous amount of pre-planning. And I know that the general public, I wanted my kids out of my house. I'm just being straight up, right? Like, my son eventually was just wearing me out. And I'm like, are you ever going to leave your room in that game? But outside of all that, we, I mean, I think we all know that we're doing the very, you all are doing the very best that you can. We're doing the best we can as a county, especially in a community that doesn't see this all the time, right? It's very different if you were up in Montana or whatever, you're like, man, I'm just going to roll through it. Let's do this thing. It's a little bit different. So really, really appreciate the help. And when I saw the picture go out about the salt truck flipped over, and I'm like, dude, like, that could be, I'm glad that that person was not injured, but that could be any one of us and our kids and all that. And then also appreciate you being willing to be real with us earlier and talking about the incidents of today, and appreciate all the work that you all do all the time, because safety is about vigilance, right? And you can't let your guard down. So I appreciate everybody not doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Mr. Triplett?
Yeah, I will break the cycle and not talk about the budget. Other than to say, as a member of the Halls community, I am thankful for the investment we've made and the resources to prepare our teams for the events of today. So as a member, you know, Halls is my home, as a member of that community, there were some scary moments for some parents and students and teachers today. And so I thank Dr. Ryswick and Chief Perry Yard for their preparation and all the planning and the vigilance they've had to prepare for a day like today that could have been. And we thank the Lord it wasn't what we thought it was. And thank our SROs and Security Division and Knox County Sheriff, and then, of course,
And thank our, our SROs and Security Division and Knox County Sheriff, and then of course, Jessica and her team and the teachers, just the real heroes that kind of ran to it rather than away from it and, and were prepared, knew what to do and executed all that and got the kids home. So we're thankful for that, and I just want to thank you guys for your, for your work.
Thank you. Ms. Pike?
Thank you. I am going to talk about the budget. I agree with previous Board members that talked about negotiations. I think it's really important to, you know, really have that wish list, and I think that that's something that I would like to see when we have our individual meetings, is to kind of see, you know, what our district's wish list was and all the spots that we kind of came close to and all of that kind of like middle ground. Because I think, you know, there are going to be sacrifices. I also agree with having, being budget neutral or, you know, 5% below. I think that that's very smart, especially our economic climate and what we're potentially like looking at in the future, but also considering the growth of Knox County and a little bit of that being unknown, I think is really important. Speaking specifically for District Four, who has some of the highest ranking elementary schools in the state, we're very privileged to have some really great teachers and educators and fully supported students, but there is still a lot of turnover in the District Four schools because teacher pay and support and being overworked and overlap classes, overcrowding, and, you know, that still exists in my district as well, which a lot of people don't realize, I think, sometimes. So I attended the listening session that was at West High School and I really appreciated it. It was really, really great. I participated as a community member because that's where my children will eventually go to high school, once they're that age. And some of the discussions that we got to have were really engaging and seeing the ideas from the community and the students, and I, I would love to see that happen more often. I don't know if every year is attainable, but certainly more than never. And I think, you know, we talked last year about custodians and looking at their pay, and I really hope that in our salary study, that we see that we can pay some of those lower paid employees a little bit more. And I'll just stop there and say thank you to Dr. Reiswick for all of the support through the snow, the incidents of today, and just thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Horne?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It has been an evening of lots of thank yous, but I would be remiss if I didn't also express my gratitude for, for Dr. Reiswick and the staff for all of the, all of the events of this week and last week, because it, I think that it has been a, just a lot of, a lot of things happening that are beyond your control, and as has already been said, all the detail and the planning that has gone before to make those, those decisions and those circumstances just flow as well as they could. Regarding the snow issue, I've seen a lot, a lot of very positive comments from parents, and that's been nice to see. We live in such a culture where people just like to complain so much, it's been nice to see positive comments. And I think that people have seen that the school district does value the safety of our students and that that is of course our primary goal, to make sure that students are safe. And so, so I just appreciate all the work and all the hours that have gone into all the decisions that have been made over the past couple of weeks. So thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Horne. Ms. Christie?
Well, now I feel peer pressure. Sorry. Yeah, yeah, positive peer. I'll keep it short, just, yeah, to echo what everyone else has said, our Security Division can't say enough good things about them, and our Maintenance Department, and just, I've gotten a lot of positive feedback too. I, I don't think some people realize that our Maintenance Department is always on call. You know, we don't wait until Monday morning when a pipe bursts to address it. So thank you, Dr. Adams, and the entire Maintenance Team, and of course, everyone who responded today as well.
Thank you, Ms. Christie. Well, I guess to echo also what everybody has said here, you know, we always talk about safety, we always talk about how safety is a priority, and today, well, not only today, this, you know, the past two weeks, we've seen that in action with the snow and putting kids' safety first. And then today, I mean, today was a parent's worst nightmare, and it was real until, for those parents, for that, for those staff members, for those kids, until we found out, luckily, and, you know, blessing that it wasn't real. And so I want to thank the officers, all of our officers, our officers back here who put their life, their lives on the lines every day, the teachers and principal and your administration and your, your, your staff, thank you for being there for our community. And I think today is a true testament of the community coming together and working together to make sure that those kids were safe. So thank you all for, for that. And with that, we are adjourned.